Okay, time to start. Commissioner Rustaller, will you lead the pledge of allegiance? Okay, moving on to roll call.
Proceeding with the oral roll call. Commissioner Hamilton. You're showing Commissioner Hamilton is absent this evening. Commissioner Grunske.
Here.
Commissioner Midgley.
Here.
Commissioner Rustaller.
Here.
Commissioner Sanga.
Here.
That concludes our call.
Okay, at this time, is there any action on requests for continuances or withdrawals?
Thank you Chair, David Kwong, your Community Development Director. You do have in your notes for the evening, a request for a continuance from a Mr. Patrick Estes, or Estes, I apologize for mispronouncing if I did. And then you also have in your package, a request from Mr. Zach Dravon, particularly in regard to item number two, the one regarding Lockford Cannabis, to keep with the item being heard tonight as well. So what I would recommend is that you discuss the continuance itself, and you can certainly ask maybe one or two members from each group to listen to in regard to continuance, but only in regard to continuance, and not in regard to the project matter at hand, but just regarding continuance as to whether you want to continue it or not. Thank you Chair.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to hear from the applicant of why this should not be continued and should be heard tonight.
Good evening Chair Grunske, members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name's Zach Dravon on behalf of NRC F1. The main reason why we're opposing the continuance tonight is, one, the public notice on the environmental review, the mitigated negative declaration, was publicly noticed on November 23rd of last year. So that's almost five months now. There has been, you know, a substantial amount of time for potential opponents to review that, organize themselves, and then next would be the fact that tonight, with a full quorum of the Planning Commission, we do anticipate that there will be opposition, and any opponents to this project will have the opportunity to be heard right here tonight. That's the basis of our opposition to the continuance, and we'd request that the hearing proceed as planned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll move in. The opposition would like to say why this item should be continued tonight.
If there's anyone who is participating through our Microsoft Teams who is in opposition of the item not being removed from the hearing schedule, this would be your opportunity. I'm showing, again, I apologize for the last name, Patrick Estes, if we're pronouncing that correctly. This would be your opportunity to unmute yourself and speak. If you were using the phone, call in, you would have to use the star six seven, sorry, star six.
Great, do you copy?
Yes, we hear you sir, please go ahead.
Wonderful. We'd like to request the continuance based on several factors. The first being the fact that this was posted during a pandemic. We think that the residents out here deserve to be allotted more time to gather our thoughts and our studies to oppose the project. Secondly, we also feel that the magnitude and scope of such a project, which would be the largest of any in our community, deserve perhaps better notification in the sense that I live a mile away, less than a mile away, and I had to find out this project through discovery, as did about 90% of the other people in our neighborhood that strongly oppose this project. So based on those two factors, we'd like to request for this continuance tonight.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have someone else that would like to speak. Again, this is on the continuance only. Correct, regarding Lockford, whether to continue the item to another date or to hear it tonight. Just the continuance, it's just make your case of why it should be heard tonight, I assume.
Okay. Okay. I prepared two papers, one is joint, and another with neighbors, and another for myself, and submitted to the record. Oh, let's see, I, here's one on, thanks for this special meeting. Am I loud enough? Okay. Thanks for this special meeting on District Four, of which I've born and raised, Lord I. With neighbors, we object to the cannabis business park plan for Lockford.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is just for to see if the item should be continued or heard tonight. It sounds like what you have would be in opposition if the item was heard tonight. So this is just to see if whether the item's going to be heard tonight or at a later date, so not the actual argument against the cannabis business park.
Chair, if I may help, ma'am, what we have is a procedural issue right now.
Yes.
And what we received is a request for a continuance from a community member, who we just heard from, I think with Mr. Estes, and he was speaking in support of continuing the hearing, whereas you also have the applicant who just appeared, who indicated they want to have the hearing tonight. So what we have to address at this point only is whether we should have the hearing or not have the hearing. If we have the hearing, then we're going to go into the merits of the project issues itself, but otherwise, at this point, we're just discussing whether you support holding the hearing or continuing it, which I think you said you want to continue it. So if that's your concern, you can simply, you know, express your concern that you want to continue it for whatever reason.
I'm devastated and horrified. I taught in Afghanistan, and I know how serious this is. I taught in the public schools.
I understand, ma'am, but that's just going to be heard at...
When could we speak in opposition of all this money?
That's what we're deciding right now, so...
When do we have our right to speak?
Pretty soon.
Answering to what was sent to me, and I...
Yeah, so it got a little more confusing because we had some people that wanted to postpone talking about this to a later date. So what we're deciding now is to hear it today or to hear it at a later date. So it's not the actual opposition to the project. That will come after we decide whether to have the discussion tonight or at another date. So you will definitely have your time to be heard, but this, what we're talking about right now is just whether we're going to hear it tonight after this vote, or postpone it to a later date, and that's it. So you will definitely be allowed to speak, it's part of the public hearing procedure. We're just deciding whether or not to talk about, or to continue this item, to hear the full item, the applicant's process, and your comments as well, tonight or postpone it to another day when there's, for example, the opposite was that there wasn't five commissioners, there's four here tonight. So that's, that's the...
Can I be notified when I have my right?
Yes, so it's going to happen right now. So we're going to decide whether to postpone this or to talk about tonight, and then during opposition, you will be able to invite it up and speak whatever that you have to a limit of five minutes, I believe.
Okay, give me the high sign when it's okay.
You got it, no problem, we'll bring you up. For the confusion, it's confusion for us as well.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, seeing that, we're going to bring it back to the board at this time to discuss continuing it or discuss hearing it tonight, as scheduled.
I guess I get to start. I am not in favor of continuance tonight. I think not only do we have copious amounts of material to read through, and while I understand the concerns of some of the residents, I think it's time for, because there's no guarantee there's going to be a full commission presence at the next meeting as well, so I'm guessing we move forward with it.
I agree. I also think that we should move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with the former board commissioners, I think we should proceed because there was enough time, and I understand the frustration some might have, but, you know, like you said, there's never a full guarantee that there's always going to be five commissioners, things happen, so I'll agree with you to continue.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second to hear this item tonight?
Like the motion that we hear this item tonight?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commencing a roll call vote. Commissioner Sanga?
Yes.
Commissioner Midgley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rustaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunske?
No.
And with Commissioner Hamilton absent, that concludes the roll call vote.
The consent item, Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement Number PA 2000142, I believe we have a letter that we want to add on to the record if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct Chair, and we did receive an email at 4:15 PM today, and we just wanted to make sure you have it in front of you in your notes for the evening. It's basically a statement of opposition to the project, and that was it.
Would any commissioner like to pull this?
Pretty loud. So the item that came in at 4:15 was after we had prepared the notes for the evening, so my suggestion would be to read the letter into the record prior to making a decision on the consent calendar, if that's okay with you.
Do I have that letter as we speak?
We can have Dom read that into the record.
That'd be great.
The reading in the email starts, "Planning Commissioners, I'm running in opposition to consent agenda item one, Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement Number PA-2000142, and Special Purpose Plan Number PA-2000070 of Marotta Land Company. Marijuana harms and destroys the lives of young users. It endangers the property and lives of citizens and law enforcement. It burdens our medical facilities and jails. Yes, some will say, well, it's get it from another county, but San Joaquin County doesn't need to be complicit for the sakes of tax revenue. As an example, if German cities had stood up to and refused to participate in the Holocaust, as many individuals did, perhaps evil had been averted. We don't want San Joaquin County to become dependent on cannabis revenue. It's always right and just to avoid abetting a wrong policy." Peter Sterns.
Okay, with that being recorded and on record, would anyone like to pull that item Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion on the consent item? Do we have a second?
Commencing with the roll call vote, Commissioner Midgley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rustaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanga?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunske?
Yes.
With Commissioner Hamilton absent, that concludes our call.
Okay, moving on to item two, Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement Number PA 2000094, and Special Purpose Plan Number PA 200007 of NRC Equity Fund.
I would like to do is have staff go ahead and add that item for you, have that discussion regarding to, I'm sorry, in regards to adding the attachment to the exhibit on the consent item. Then you can still make the same determination, and what we would do is we would just do a motion, a reconsideration, a motion of reconsideration to readdress the consent motion, that will essentially clear out the previous motion, and we'll be able to move forward, and it'd be a record on that item. I apologize for not interjecting.
Oh, no, you're going to have to talk me through it, but that's from the development title update, is that correct? Or is that what we're adding?
In regards to the development agreement, which is part of the MLC project, and I apologize.
So there's not a way that we can amend the motion as I presented it? We still have to reconsider it and take a vote?
Once there has been a vote on a motion, I don't believe you can amend the motion. I think the appropriate way to deal with it, once there's been a vote, that's a good question though, and now I think about it, but once there's a vote, essentially, that motion and that action is done. So the way that we want to revisit it is a motion of reconsideration, which you can do in the same meeting, and it would just be to add the new information, and go through the same process, so, but I will have staff explain what it is that we're going to make a change. It's a simple change, and then we can reconsider that motion. Thank you so much, I apologize.
Looking to add this evening is contained in your notes for the evening, it's referred to as DA Exhibit Six Attachment A Licensee Community Benefits, MLC. It would be inserted following page 54 of the Development Agreement in your staff report. And essentially, this was inadvertently left out of the Development Agreement that was provided to staff for the staff report and was corrected this morning, so that's why you're getting it in your notes for this evening. The applicant, or the applicant's representative, did bring a clean copy of the Development Agreement, and if you, it may not be the entire Development Agreement, you may want to ask him exactly what he would like to submit on the record. I believe he feels like it would be cleaner than just the few pages that we have in your notes for the evening, so I'll leave that up to your discretion. It was Zach Dravon who did that.
Okay, so what would be the, have the applicant come out, put it on record, and then revote essentially? Okay, let's do it.
Yeah, so essentially, I would note, just so everybody is aware, including those on the phone, is that you, in your notes for this evening, there is the item, the four-page Attachment A to the Development Agreement that's in your notes for this evening. It was also, and essentially, the terms in that attachment are in your staff report. All of the documents you considered do include the financial terms, but the attachment itself will be adding, in order for you to, you can use the ones in the notes for this evening, but I believe the applicant does want to be heard on adding that item for clarification.
Great.
Commissioner Grunske, just briefly for clarity, what's been added to your materials tonight is the full Exhibit Six of the Marotta Land Company Development Agreement. That would include Exhibit Six Attachment A, which has the community benefits. Additionally, the original staff report and the original Exhibit Six licensee agreement itself contained a couple of scrivener's errors. One was the header on that, on that exhibit, said Exhibit Seven and not Exhibit Six. That's been corrected in the clean copy. Additionally, Recital C included the application number, address, and APN for the next item on the agenda. Those two have been corrected in this clean copy, and the staff report following your vote on this item will be updated for the full board with those notations corrected.
Sounds good, very good.
Thank you.
And now that that's on record, we could just go...
Now, the question for you as a chair would be whether you want to move forward, does anyone want to pull this item as discussed with the letter read into the record, as well as the addition of the Attachment A? Do they want to pull that from the consent calendar? That would, that question would be appropriate, and then you would move forward with, if nobody pulls it, then you'd move forward with the consent calendar. Again, I appreciate...
Yeah, no problem.
...the details.
After hearing that, does any commissioner want to pull this from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none.
Oh.
Do you like us to revote?
Point of clarification. Usually when it's a consent item, anyone...
Is his mic on?
The mic?
Go ahead.
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
A consent item, you, someone on the phone or in the audience, or a member of the Commission may pull that item, correct? So do we have to re-ask again, is there anybody on the phone or in the audience who, having heard what we need to add, or wasn't there originally? Is that...
The chair can ask that. What that person on the phone or the person in the public would be doing is they would be saying, I do want you to pull it, but it would have to be pulled by a commissioner. So it can only actually be pulled if a commissioner asks, and then that's dealt with through the chair. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I want to clarify that, because I don't want, I want full transparency that we're doing this.
I appreciate that, absolutely agree.
Have a motion to vote on the consent item once again?
Motion to reconsider, isn't that what we're doing?
It would be a motion to reconsider the motion, a motion to reconsider the approval of the consent calendar, and then you would, you would vote on that.
Okay, so I make a motion that we reconsider what she said, no, reconsider to put consent item back on the consent calendar so we can redo this whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah, put that in the minute.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Could we have a motion in a second?
Commencing with the roll call vote, we have Commissioner Rustaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanga?
Yes.
Commissioner Midgley?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunske?
Yes.
With Commissioner Hamilton absent, that concludes our call.
May I have that motion, sorry Chair, if I may through the chair, may I have that motion reread? Do you restate that motion?
Motion was to reconsider the original vote on the consent calendar.
And I'm going to clarify, was that the original vote to approve the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes, and commissioners, that is what you then voted on was the motion to reconsider the approval, and therefore, that item is approved based on that motion, as you intended.
Okay, so we don't have to make another motion?
I just wanted to clarify that motion.
Okay, in the future, if we can leave all difficult things to, well, I'm not Chair, and I'm Vice Chair, and I could just sit there, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I'm thinking of backup too, I hear you.
That would be the ideal situation.
And Chair, I apologize for completely just interrupting you consistently, I just did want to clarify that motion as being a motion to reconsider and an approval of the item, I believe that we've covered that. Thank you.
I'm happily married, I get corrected every day. It's part of life. All right, moving on to commercial, item two, Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear? A presentation for you, as soon as we get that up.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. This project is a Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement and Special Purpose Plan to develop a cannabis business park permitting cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, and non-storefront retail sales, which means delivery only, of commercial cannabis by tenant operators. The project will be built out in two phases over five years, with a total build-out of 371,918 square feet. The project site is located on the south side of East Lock Road, 3,347 feet southwest of North State Route 88 Highway in Lockford. The project site has a general plan designation of General Industrial, or IG, and a zoning designation of General Industrial, or IG. This aerial photo depicts a project site. The surrounding properties are primarily industrial and agricultural, there is some residential development to the north. This is a copy of the revised site plan submitted by the applicant. On May 21st, 2019, the Board of Supervisors approved the current Commercial Cannabis Ordinance Development Title Chapter 9-1090, which permits commercial cannabis operations within a cannabis business park subject to a special purpose plan and a Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement. Additionally, all operators within the cannabis business park must obtain a commercial cannabis license through the Environmental Health Department. The project site is within a predominantly industrially zoned area on the south side of Lock Road, with residential and agricultural development adjacent to the north within the urban community of Lockford. The nearest residence is approximately 1,100 feet northeast of the project site. On July 17th, 2000, the Community Development Department approved site approval application SA-00-0036 to establish six micro wineries with an accessory truck scale and wine storage tanks. Winery activity will continue on the parcel. The proposed cannabis business park will utilize 371,918 square feet of building at build-out. The area of the parcel where the greenhouse buildings for cultivation are proposed is currently vacant. Construction will be completed in two phases over five years, construction will be completed in two phases over five years, and follows, as follows, and includes buildings used for cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and non-storefront retail sales. The project proposes four shifts, 24 hours a day, seven days per week. Additionally, a security guard, or several guards, will be on-site seven days a week, and work shifts in 12-hour increments. The applicant and the county administrator have agreed to terms of the Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement. The proposed agreement has a 20-year term and requires the applicant to pay the county the following one-time fees, $40,000 within 20 days of the county's recording of the Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement, and $20,000 upon the county's issuance of the first commercial cannabis license at the park. Each tenant operator is required to pay gross, county gross receipt impact fees. The fees will initially be set at 3.5% of gross revenues from each licensed operation within the cannabis park, but can be increased by the Board of Supervisors by a resolution by half a percent per year, starting in year two of the Development Agreement, up to a maximum of 5%. Finally, the applicant will hold $20,000 of security bonds to be paid to the county in the event of a default of gross revenue impact fee payments by commercial cannabis licensees. Any operator within the cannabis business park will be required to obtain a commercial cannabis license as required by San Joaquin County Development, or Title IV. Each licensee must operate pursuant to an odor control plan approved by the county's Environmental Health Department at the time of licensing. Each licensee will be regulated and subject to enforcement for violations of their annual license. Additionally, the cannabis business park must have a security plan approved by the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Department. The Bureau of Cannabis Control is the lead agency in regulating commercial cannabis licenses for commercial cannabis in California. The Bureau is responsible for licensing retailers, distributing... The Bureau is responsible for licensing retailers, distributors, testing labs, and micro businesses. The manufacture cannabis safety branch is a division of the California Department of Public Health and is responsible for licensing the manufacturers of cannabis edibles for both medical and non-medical uses. Cannabis, or Cal cannabis cultivation licensing, a division of the California Department of Food and Agriculture, is responsible for licensing cultivators of commercial cannabis and implementing a chain of custody system. Each licensee will be directly regulated and enforced by the applicable state division. Because cannabis is classified as a controlled substance under federal law, any cannabis project must, or any cannabis project proposed in San Joaquin County cannot participate in the San Joaquin County Council of Governments' San Joaquin Multi-Species Conservation Plan. As a result, the Community Development Department required a biological study for the project site. A biological memorandum prepared by Analytical Environmental Services dated July 2020 states that no sensitive habitats occur on the project site. The memo states that although no nesting migratory birds were identified in the vicinity of the project site during the survey, nesting migratory birds within 500 feet of the project site could be affected if vegetation removal or loud noise-producing activities associated with the construction occur during the general nesting season, which is February 15th through September 15th. The memo states that implementation of mitigation measures would reduce potential impacts to migratory birds to less than significant. These measures have been incorporated into the recommended conditions of approval. The Community Development Department received letters of opposition to the project from various agencies and 14 neighbors. Additionally, there were three separate petitions in opposition to the proposed project. The opposition raised concerns regarding property values, traffic, air quality and odor, groundwater supply and contamination, noise, security and criminal activity, aesthetics and lighting, energy usage, and hazardous materials. With regards to property values, they are not under the purview of the Community Development Department. Therefore, property values are not a consideration for land use determinations. With regards to traffic concerns, a traffic impact analysis prepared by K.D. Andersons and Associates dated October 13th, 2020, determined that the project will generate less than 110 automobile trips per day and therefore is considered a small project according to the Technical Advisory on Evaluating Transportation Impacts pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Additionally, the Department of Public Works reviewed the project and determined that the project as designed will not exceed 50 vehicle trips per hour, which is a county significance threshold as described by Development Title Section 9-1150.4. With regards to air quality and odor concerns, all cannabis activities will be performed indoors. The proposed project will be required to pave access driveways and parking areas in asphalt concrete or Portland cement concrete as required by the Development Title. The project does not include onsite storefront retail sales or other uses which draw cannabis-related customers to the site, thus minimizing car traffic to and from the site. As a result of the required surfacing, dust generated by the movement of vehicles on to and off of the property related to the project are expected to be less than significant. Regarding odors, the project applicant proposes to implement an odor control system for the greenhouse structures for the cultivation operation. This system will be mounted on the exhaust vents and expel an essential oil-based mixture that neutralizes odor and is suspended, basically encapsulating airborne molecules. The proposed project will also be subject to public safety requirements contained in Title IV of the San Joaquin County Ordinance, which require that commercial cannabis licensees each operate pursuant to an odor control plan approved by the county's Environmental Health Department as a part of the county licensing process. The new greenhouses and uses within the existing buildings will include air filters and air circulation devices to reduce and eliminate the potential for mold. With these requirements in place, no air quality impacts are anticipated. With regards to water contamination and supply concerns, the manufacturing process will utilize a closed-loop extraction system that recirculates water used in the process. Therefore, the project will not generate significant amounts of wastewater as a result of the manufacturing process. With regards to groundwater supply concerns, the system proposed in the cannabis cultivation operation will recover 90 to 100% of the water used in the irrigation of the crop. The applicant states that the pump for the onsite well has an annual capacity of 31,536,000 gallons of water. While the cannabis operation is anticipated to use approximately 16,800 gallons of water annually, therefore impacts to groundwater supplies are anticipated to be less than With regards to noise concerns, all commercial cannabis activities will be performed indoors. The proposed project will not generate a substantial increase to ambient noise levels or excessive ground vibration and noise in the vicinity of the project site. The cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution activities will take place indoors and no outdoor cultivation is permitted. In addition, no customers are permitted on the site with the exception of customers visiting the winery. Also, construction activities occurring between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM are exempt from noise standards allowed, as allowed by the Development Title. And maximum sound levels for stationary noise sources during the daytime is 70 decibels and 65 decibels for nighttime. The proposed project would be subject to these Development Title standards, therefore noise impacts from the project are anticipated to be less than significant. With regards to security, the cannabis business park is required to have an approved security plan with the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Department as a part of Title IV requirements. The Sheriff's Office issued a response letter dated December 24th, which listed requirements by the, which listed requirements by which the Commercial Cannabis Business Park must abide. These requirements may be modified, provided the security plan meets the security requirements of the Sheriff's Office. The security plan must be approved and in place prior to any operation of a commercial cannabis. With regards to aesthetic concerns, all commercial cannabis activities will be performed indoors on the industrially developed site. The onsite developments or improvements are set back for a minimum of 350 feet from East Lock Road and on flat terrain. The project will utilize both existing and new structures for cannabis activities, which will be required to meet all applicable setback and height requirements prescribed in the Development Title. Additionally, the project is in an established urban community with no scenic vistas and not located along a scenic route or roadway as defined in the 2035 general plan. All lighting proposed for the site must meet Development Title requirements and must not spill onto adjacent properties. Regarding energy usage, the project will be subject to all applicable California Building Code requirements, which will be reviewed at the time of building permit submittal. Considering the reuse of existing buildings and the nature of the greenhouse facilities, the project also will not conflict or obstruct state or local plans for renewable energy or energy efficiency. With regards to hazardous materials, the project will be subject to all county environmental health department regulations and report to the Calif, or report to the California Environmental Reporting System before any hazardous materials can be used or stored on-site. Additionally, herbicide use, which will be subject to compliance with any state or local regulations governing pest, pesticide regulations. Emergency access to the site meets all applicable county and fire code requirements and the project will provide equipment requested by the McCollumey Fire District. This picture was taken from Lock Road looking south towards the front of the property. This picture depicts an existing winery building, a portion of which will be utilized for cold storage and suites for the mobile delivery operation. This picture was taken on the project site looking south towards the area of the proposed greenhouse structures. This picture depicts an existing winery building, which will be utilized for processing, storage, and manufacturing activities. Thank you. This concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you. At this time, we're going to hear from the applicant or the representation?
Vice Chair Grunske and members of the commission, again, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Zach Travan. I'm an attorney on behalf of NRCF One this evening. First, I'd like to note that the original attachment seven had the exhibit seven, rather, had attachment A, the community benefits omitted. That has also been provided through the clerk this evening, the full attachment seven to this project, and the staff report will be corrected. I do want to also note that the substantive terms in that attachment, the impact fees, were notated in the staff report, which were, those were properly noticed, and I just wanted to make that note for the record as well. So again, thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank staff for all their hard work in bringing, bringing this project for you this evening. We've been actively working to advance this project for the last three years. From the inception of the county's consideration of commercial cannabis regulation, we've been advocating for sound policy, along with the opportunity to take this historical and grossly underutilized industrial site to its highest and best use, to create jobs, revenue, and new opportunities for growth in this multi-billion dollar industry right here at home. You could say that this project is 50 years in the making, as this site was originally constructed and operated from 1947 until 1973 as the Lockford Winery Collective, but since then has been used only sparsely and is now occupied by several small businesses, including Gypsy Bistro Restaurant and Catering Service, Lone Grape Winery, and LVVR Sparkling Cellars, all of which would remain in operation following approval, development, and commencement of cannabis operations at the site. With over 35,000 square feet of existing poured concrete and masonry structures to be improved for processing, distribution, manufacturing, and delivery operations, and 20 acres of viable open space that would be developed for rigid structure greenhouses, this site presents as an extremely valuable resource that will bring a strong injection of economic activity as a result of its development as a cannabis business park. We know that this project has not come without concerns and criticism. We understand these concerns and have worked diligently to provide as much information and due diligence as possible to reassure community members and leaders alike that this project can be developed and operated safely without creating any inconvenience or nuisance to the surrounding community. I'd also note that we attended a municipal advisory council meeting out in Lockford last week where some of the opponents were present. Staff members gave their presentation. Opponents were offered the opportunity to ask questions of staff. We also provided a brief presentation and offered them the opportunity to ask us questions. In our humble opinion, we felt that that actually went rather well and, and we worked to clarify some misunderstandings that the opponents have, but I'm sure we will hear from others this evening. Based on the nature of the prospective use, especially in light of existing industrial uses already taking place in the adjacent neighboring properties with Jensen Precast and Kellogg fertilizer on either side of the property, the commercial cannabis activity to take place onsite will be relatively low impact and extremely discreet in comparison. Through the environmental study and mitigated negative declaration, the county has found that there will be no significant negative impacts to the environment and the surrounding community. I had some notes regarding specific mitigation members, but I'm just going to add a little to what staff has already shared with you. They mentioned all commercial cannabis activity will take place within enclosed structures on the interior of the site, with separate dedicated access for cannabis operators and employees on the eastern side of the property's frontage with no public access, so that customers, employees, and members of the public patronizing businesses in the building fronting Lock Road will not be disturbed by cannabis business activities. There will be zero impact to biological or cultural resources in the development of this project, and additionally, all fertilizers and amendments to be utilized in cannabis cultivation will be organic as required by the California Department of Food and Agriculture. Given that we will also be using drip irrigation and treating each plant individually within the greenhouses themselves, there is no potential for groundwater pollution or chemicals affecting neighbors. There will be a less than significant impact on energy resources, as cannabis cultivation within the greenhouses will utilize sun as the primary source of energy, with solar infrastructure to be added as an additional green friendly resource of power. As to security, the entire site will be secured by the existing wrought iron and new construction of chain link fencing with security lighting around each structure as well as the entire perimeter of the property. We will also have 360-degree surveillance camera coverage with live monitored administration and 24-hour onsite security. All of the owners and operators at this facility will be subject to background checks and screening by the county, the developers themselves, as well as the state of California for necessary licensure, with all products and transactions to be run through the state's track and trace metric system and subject to potential auditing by the county and state. Furthermore, the initial tenant licensees to take occupancy onsite are existing commercial cannabis operators with active operations in Yolo County and Calaveras County with an unblemished history of compliance, deep experience, and ongoing success in the California cannabis market. With a minimum contribution of 3.5% of any and all revenues generated from commercial cannabis activity at this site, this project will bring millions of dollars in impact fees, which presents a significant resource to bolster services for the community. We believe that the potential of the site, coupled with the competence and experience of the developers and initial tenants operating under the strict regulatory oversight of the county and state, creates a unique opportunity and great likelihood of success for this new project. With that, I thank you for your time. I'd ask that you please vote to recommend approval of this project to the Board of Supervisors. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and some of the initial tenant operators are here to answer any operational specific questions for you as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Could you, do you tell more about the security and how it will affect or give those folks around the area a better sense of how secure this facility would be?
Certainly. So if you look to some of the presentation materials, you'll see that there is a poured concrete structure fronting Lock Road, and that is secured by a wrought iron fence that runs to the sides of the property itself. So the entire site is currently secured by fencing currently, and it's notable that that building that fronts Lock Road is not going to be utilized for commercial cannabis activity at all. So you have access gates on the western and eastern side of the property. As I mentioned, the eastern side is going to be dedicated access for the commercial cannabis activities. The entire perimeter, again, will be secured, and we're going to have security lighting around the entire perimeter. All, every building that's going to be utilized for commercial cannabis activity, including the greenhouses, is going to be monitored, both interior and exterior, with live monitored surveillance cameras, which means we have real-time administrators that are able to look at that footage that's taking place in real time and notify our onsite security guards if there is an actual verifiable security threat. So we're going to have guards, cameras, security lighting, and the entire perimeter secured by fencing. Additionally, obviously, all of these structures are going to be secured by commercial-grade doors and locks, and as I mentioned, all of the interior spaces facilitating commercial cannabis activity are actually required to be under camera surveillance by the state of California. So this is a multi-layered, substantial security infrastructure that's going to be running 24 hours a day. As to the power resources for that security infrastructure, our system is going to have backup batteries in the event of a power outage to ensure that there is no lapse in security if we have a rolling blackout or something like that.
Hey, very good. Any other comments or questions?
Sorry, so I had a question. You said the owner operatives are having unblemished record and they have experience and competence. Can you tell me what kind of experience and how long have they been in business in other counties?
Yes, ma'am. So they were one of the first registrants in 2016 and 2017 for commercial operations in Calaveras County. Following the registration of their farms there in Calaveras County, the county decided to ban commercial cannabis activity. And so they relocated to Yolo County and partnered with some of the existing operators there in 2018, and since that time have been operating two acres in Yolo County on two different locations in partnership with some residents there in Yolo. So they have been working closely with the Yolo County Task Force. Additionally, as to the Calaveras County location, following their ban on commercial cannabis activity, Calaveras County actually adopted a new ordinance to facilitate the permitting of those formerly registered farms. And so last season, we went through the permitting process with Calaveras County, and last summer we were successful in establishing permitting for an additional two acres in Calaveras County, which we're very happy to say we had a successful season and harvest. Again, all of that product is run through the state's track and trace system, and notably, I mentioned, you know, the, the fact that there's some synergy between the existing operations, the operators themselves, and what would take place here. So as part of the- So as part of the uses to be approved here is processing, as well as manufacturing and distribution. So we have operators in the market now that, once this facility, in the event of its approval, would be improved, we could bring product from their existing operations and run it through this facility as somewhat of a distribution hub. So these aren't inexperienced operators that you're dealing with. They're not going to be learning the ropes in the market. We'd be able to hit the ground running. We're familiar with the regulations as far as cultivation and distribution of cannabis, and we feel that, you know, not only should that provide some reassurance to community members, given that we've been under the regulatory oversight of the state for several years now, as well as local municipalities, but we're poised to be successful in the market because it is a very dynamic market. It's unique, and in order to be successful with the new venture such as this, experienced operators are an invaluable resource.
I appreciate that, but that being said, this one is delivery-only. The previous operations, were they delivery-only or were they selling onsite?
No, they do not currently hold retail licenses for delivery or storefront.
Okay. But this particular one we're talking about is delivery-only, you said, right?
This facility...
What we're discussing right now?
It would include cultivation, greenhouse cultivation...
And delivery-only?
And delivery, as well as manufacturing, distribution, and processing. Processing is a subset of cultivation, so as a cultivator, you can process your own products onsite, meaning that you can harvest it, you can trim it, you can dry it, you can cure it, but if you do not hold a processor license, you can only conduct those activities for products that you grow onsite. With the processor license, you can take in third-party product and provide processing, that processing as a service, or you can take in that product wholesale, process it, and then distribute it back out into the open market. So you are correct, they do not currently have licenses for delivery. This would be a new venture as far as that use is concerned, but in the market generally, they do have significant experience.
So when you do delivery, you, obviously, everybody knows this is a cash business.
Yes.
So the person who's doing the delivery, are they secured, or how do they carry, depending on how much cash they're carrying? That can create some nuisance also, so that becomes a public safety issue.
So the cash to be carried would be limited only to the change that they'd be anticipated to provide to the customers. There's actually a limitation as to the volume of product that a delivery operator can carry in the car at any given time. That's $5,000. $3,000, if you're carrying a total of $5,000 worth of product, $3,000 of that has to be spoken for with pending delivery orders. Additionally, every single stop that that delivery driver makes, it has to be logged into basically a delivery log, and every transaction is tracked. So other, I represent clients that have retail and delivery out of Stanislaus County. They actually maintain surveillance cameras on the dash of the vehicle that face towards the driver and also towards the street. Each delivery vehicle is also required to have a dedicated GPS device that basically integrates into their enterprise system, so that the business operators themselves, as well as the state, know the present location of that delivery vehicle and every stop that they're making along the way. And so there are safety precautions that are built into the regulations, and we would certainly be above-board as far as the security precautions that we would take in conducting that activity as well.
Thank you for explaining that. I'm just asking these questions for public records of people who don't understand or don't know the basics of this. So any given time, the limit is at $5,000. So any given time, a person can be carrying $5,000 cash on him or her?
$5,000 worth of product, there wouldn't be any reason for that delivery driver to carry $5,000 in currency. In order, so another part of the regulatory scheme for delivery is that you can't simply go out into the streets and act as a rover. You have to have pending delivery orders in order to send your delivery vehicle out into the street. Now, you can have $2,000 worth of product, so if you have $5,000 worth of product, $3,000 has to be subject to pending delivery orders. That leaves an additional $2,000 worth of product, that if the facility fields delivery orders for the products in inventory in that vehicle, they can fulfill those orders, but the vehicle has to go from delivery location to delivery location, and it can only be idle, if you want to use that term, for a period of 30 minutes before it's required to go back to the delivery facility to red dispatch, if you will.
Thank you again. Again, my question is, at any given time, whether it is getting delivered to a certain person or whether it's only $3,000, the maximum of $5,000 worth of currency, or the product can be on that vehicle?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else from the Commission?
A quick question. Can you repeat the financial benefits for the community as well? And just clarify, I mean, I'm not familiar if that goes to the county overall, is it a direct injection to the community there, or how's that work? And that build-out, I guess, would be the...
So through our development agreement, we've obligated our licensee tenants to provide 3.5% minimum of their gross revenues to the county as impact fees. And so the Board of Supervisors, although that initial rate is set at 3.5% of their gross revenues, the Board, starting in year two of the development agreement, has the ability to raise that by 0.5% per year with a cap of 5%. And so that's for any of the activities onsite, whether it's cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, or what have you. And then staff mentioned that there are also one-time fees, $40,000 within 20 days of recording of the DA, and I think $20,000 when the first commercial cannabis license is issued to one of the licensee tenants that are actually going to operate the cannabis businesses at the space.
Okay, very good. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, is there any other people that are for the project that would like to speak? Okay, seen and done. At this time, we'll take opponents of the project may speak. Start with the in attendance folks. And again, it's limited to five minutes.
I need the mask right now. Speak? Okay, thank you. It's curious. I noticed, I found that NRC is in, NRC Equity is in Reno, Nevada. I taught in Las Vegas. They don't pay state taxes because the state is known for gambling. I'd like to know who the affiliates are with this Reno headquarters. Thank you. So here's... Okay. Talking with neighbors, I learned we could do a joint signature item, and I took notes of an agriculture teacher, and so I handed you the sheet. He suggested that... He's in his 80s. I couldn't talk him into coming here, but he'll teach teenagers, or substitute, anyway. It's... Again, thanks for this special meeting on District Four with neighbors. We object to the Cannabis Business Park CBP plan for Lockford. If we, although we live in Lodi, we need the Sierra water, groundwater for our vineyards and all. If we have more marijuana areas, what will this do to the crime rate, accidents, increased gang activities, and damages? We know that there's a lot of marijuana being grown right now around the river, around Lockford. Who accounts for more costs to hospitals with various mental issues, including veterans mentally handicapped? But mental issues are known to develop from marijuana. It could mean increased, if we have more marijuana areas, what will this do to the crime rate, accidents, increased gang activities, and damages? I taught across the street that ended up being a prostitution ring, and the girl's face all bruised in, and it's generational in that refugee area of Long Beach where I was teaching, and my husband. So we've seen firsthand the damage. And who accounts for more costs to hospitals with various mental issues? Law enforcement, community services devalued, and so forth? Below is a list of concerns to note with questions for your timely replies tonight. Thanks for the five minutes. I should have checked the time. Okay. There's three major points. I'd like to read my prepared statement. So this is for you to look over, I hope during our Q&amp;A reply session. Can you have a study team do a survey of people affected and devastated by this cannabis park plan in District Four for manarco crops, theft of cannabis plants around the area, water pollution, and federal laws like vernal tide tools? Okay, that's the first... I'd like to give credit to Dave Gillingwater, agriculture teacher for years, for this really good questions he said to me yesterday. Number two, at least I hope you find them helpful. Accountability and increased crime, health issues, laws, and taxes. Point A, would the county promote a substance like this? B, yeah, I wondered, how much did the county pay for this at all? And, let's see, excuse me. Mental health, DUIs will increase with more autos mishaps and deaths. Just knowing about this place being in Lockford. Tax increases, budgets, what about our serious homeless issues from addictions and housing, communities damaged by new crime waves? And there's more on those points, but I'd like to, when friends called and said, Jackie, go and speak, because they, oh, I care. We know you all do too. Anyway. Most are horrified about the impact of any cannabis business park to Lodi areas, District Four, and San Joaquin County. Since seventh century, the word terrorist means assassin, and that's from hashish, meaning impacted marijuana. This was in Iran in 1200s.
Excuse me, miss, the five minutes is up. Are you, can you wrap that up pretty quickly, or we got a long letter left, or?
Oh, okay.
Some of your concerns, I'm sure, will be addressed by some of the other people that are going to speak.
Okay, and I did pass out the...
Okay.
Okay. Well, this, the impact in the National Geographic, it says Iran in 1200s grew narco crops to be more bellicose or more like. National Geographic, November 2018, and then another quote, "Department records confirm Arab smuggling cells, Al Qaeda in Mexico, and violent gangs, MS-13 coming across the border in USA," notes Homeland Security JudicialWatch.org 2021. So thank you. I got to give some of the references, and I appreciate...
Thank you.
...we can get notice. It's only friends telling me. How can we get notice when you have more meetings?
Well, thank you for speaking, and we'll move on to other opponents of the project as well.
Thank you very much.
Anyone in attendance that would like to speak as an opponent on the project as well?
Ask that they do, it's not a requirement to speak. No good clarification?
Okay, I just wanted to briefly state that allowing cannabis in local unincorporated areas was never passed by the voters. Although it got a majority of votes, it did not get the two-thirds required majority. The wording used to try to get the measure passed was extremely deceptive, and I know of multiple people who voted yes, not realizing that they voted for the growth and sales of cannabis, as they strongly oppose its use. I would also like to state that I came across the Peace Officers Training Guide for Law Enforcement... Yes, thank you. I would also like to state that I came across the Peace Officers Training Guide for Law Enforcement Personnel in California stating, quote, "Cannabis chemicals are still dangerous to the environment and to people," unquote. Please protect our environment and our citizens with your no vote on the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else coming up now?
Hi, Councilwoman. We both have just asked that you please oppose the project. We don't want anything to happen to our environment, anything worse to our children, to our families, to the towns. We all know that it's not a good thing for the people. It's not what's needed at this time. It's just more recreational than medical, and we know with all the increased crime, with all of that, it's not going to be safe anymore for any of us to go anywhere. And as of right now, we all enjoy our freedoms, and we wish to keep it that way, and I think by doing so, it would be to cap what's going on and not allow things like this to happen. So, thank you, and I ask that you please vote no on this, and that we both oppose the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in attendance like to speak?
Hello, everybody. I'm actually looking at this from two different ways. So just in the interest of full disclosure, I do work at San Joaquin General Hospital. I am a county employee. From one aspect, I think that a marijuana factory in Lockford's a great idea because I do work a lot in the emergency room, and we can always use the crime and the trauma victims. You know, a hospital's always looking for patients, so in one sense, increased crime might be a conflict of interest for me because it's going to make more money for our hospital. But on the other end, I am really concerned about this project because, again, we talked about the security that will be done by the project owners and the security around the delivery drivers, the security around the plants, but I'm actually not concerned about that. I think they have a pretty good handle on that, but there's a lot of things that we can't control. Obviously, they can control what their drivers do, but they certainly can't control what other people who may have an interest in what those drivers are carrying. There's not going to be any way to tell who's robbing who or what cartels might come in. I can tell you from personal experience at the county and the trauma center, there is a lot of organized crime here in San Joaquin County. The cartels know who's coming in and who's not. There are certain areas that are controlled by certain people, and I'm sure they would be more than happy to see this come in because they're looking at it as an opportunity for getting involved, you know? So I feel like from a law enforcement perspective, this is just a bad idea for that reason. We know that already that the police are, I don't know if there's a move to defund police here in San Joaquin County, but I know that's a really big movement across the United States right now. And without getting into the politics of that, whether it's a good idea or not, that is something that's going to be addressed in San Joaquin County sooner rather than later. Again, that's kind of the talk that we have here at the hospital. So with less police officers, with less people, you know, keeping eyes on things, and with more potential for other cartel areas to come in, I just don't know if this is a good idea for San Joaquin County at this time. So that's my perspective, again, just working in the emergency room, working in trauma. On one hand, sure, we can always use the business. On the other hand, speaking in the interest of people, this is not a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I'd just like to say also, I'm in the healthcare, I'm in healthcare. I am against the project. I'm also a farmer. We do business in that area, on the crops and everything. That's what we do. It will be a horrible way to use that facility to put it into a marijuana distribution. There are a lot of other things could be used that will benefit farmer, society. And we're, like I said, that's a bad place to put it. It's a very good place for something productive, not destructive. Okay, thank you. I hope you vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's it for everyone. We have an attendant, I believe, probably have some people online. For those who are participating via our Microsoft Teams, this would be your moment to unmute yourself and speak. You do have a few people lined up. We will begin that with Patty Stetson. Please unmute yourself and address the commission. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Patty Stetson. First of all, I do have a question to the commission. Have you had an opportunity to read the letters of opposition or concern yet that have been submitted to the Community Development Department?
Yes, we have. It was included.
Okay.
No reports.
And the reason I, the reason I ask is I personally wrote a letter, but I'm also speaking on behalf of the Lockford Municipal Advisory Council, or the MAC. I'm the current Chairperson of the MAC. We submitted a letter of concern in December after a virtual meeting that we held. We had representatives of Community Development Department, the Sheriff's Office, and the Supervisor's Office who shared information with us. And last week, as the, one of your project people had mentioned, we did have an in-person meeting. We had representatives of the proposed project, Community Development Department, the Sheriff's Office, McCullough Fire Department was speaking with us. To note, to date, we, in verbal and written communication with community business members and residents, the MAC has received only questions of concern or opposition, nothing to support this plan. First of all, I do want to thank the Community Development Department for increasing the notification to the area property owners rather than the few hundred feet that's required by law. There's been many people who have told us that they were not even aware of the plan, of what was going to go on in the 23-acre winery project. The summary, we believe, in response to many of the letters of opposition, they replied to them, but not really a satisfactory resolution to our previously stated concerns. Specifically, and I won't go into them now and use the time, they involve mostly the environmental, the safety, and indirect concerns that the project of this magnitude would create for our unincorporated rural area. The project reps who were at our meeting talked about their non-storefront retail sales. And quite frankly, that was quite misleading. When I think of non-storefront sale, retail sales, I think of somebody bringing something to a business and there you get it. And they went on to tell us by somehow signing up and texting a requirement or something to that effect, a client would be serviced with cannabis products at the remote location, their home, their the business. The business vehicles would be delivering right to their doorsteps. This isn't not only a potential safety issue, it would increase the local traffic and the criminal element. I'm thinking about all of our postal mail thefts that we have in this area, our porch pirates, and that's just petty thieves. That's not to this magnitude of what they consider a high-quality product. And as was mentioned, it could be up to $5,000 worth of product and/or cash onboard these vans. That leads into the question of, or the concerns of security. Our Sheriff's Office had presented to us a well, very detailed plan, not with all the details, of course, but they outlined that they have quite a plan in place that, of course, will be required. But again, as your last speaker said, what happens when they're off the premises? You can control and you can plan for the retail personnel and the drivers, but you have no idea what's going to happen once they leave the site. The response time and the trained officers out in this area are remote. We don't have the staffing that a city or a area near a rural, an urban area would supply. It would all be a reactive activity to an incident that occurs. And as we know, it's a cash business. One other concern that came up, and it was brought up a little bit about the lighting. Lighting may be on the perimeter and not fall over off of the land. But there's a, as I described at our meeting, it glows. There's a lighting glow. Well, I think if I was a resident that lives several hundred yards away, I would be concerned seeing a lighting glow 24/7 near my property. Some of the other concerns that would go along with that are more of the indirect effects of the property. There are over 3,000 people that live within one mile of this proposed plan. There are people that live across the street, next door, to the west, mostly to the northeast. But there's a huge area. This is not an industrial, although it's zoned as such and is appropriate for the zoning, it's not appropriate for our area. This is not, it is zoned with no residents in the area. Property values, as stated in the staff report, may not be a consideration for land use determination, but they're definitely a factor in this type of business if it's allowed in San Joaquin County. Our county and our residents out here experience the small rural roads. We have a two-lane state highway, one traffic light that's controlled. We have congested commuter and recreational travelers. And we have traffic and safety issues. Our schools have up to, our one school here has up to 500 children, which is one mile away. We have limited pathways and walkways and sidewalks. And then again, the comments about personal water, we have to restrict our water here. We're from the same aquifer. We all know we're under sigma control and requirements from the state. And again, wastewater might be less than because they're going to do a drip irrigation, but a wastewater pond is going to have wastewater. It will be over the property and near the aquifer. So that is a concern.
Okay, ma'am, we've reached the five minutes at this time.
Oh, okay. In summary, what I would like to say is, in closing, is we were in receipt of some documents finding that the applicant, NRC, is not actually from Reno. They're actually from the state of Wyoming, and their contact address is Reno. They also stated the project, local business owners and growers are local and they have local experience, although we didn't have details until the rep now talked about a few of them. We also found out that there was a plan with this corporation from San Luis Obispo in 2018 that was involved with a winery, which we don't know all the details. But in public record, it did show that they filed in 2018, but yet Chapter 11 bankruptcy was filed in 2020. So what exactly is, is this a similar project that they're going to bring to Lockford and close down the winery and just do this huge cannabis business? It just seems like there's a lot of things that have not been forthcoming with the public. There's been no chance for public meetings and cannabis, COVID has been difficult to do that, but we do feel in conclusion that this really has no benefit to use for this cannabis facility in Lockford or unincorporated San Joaquin County. And we would urge you to request further study before you make any action on this major industrial plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Next on the list of participants, Patrick Estes, would you please unmute and address the commission? Thank you.
Yes, hi there. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Appreciate the commission giving me five minutes to speak in opposition of the project. I'd like to start by mentioning, bringing to light the fact that Mr. Dervonge uses the terms trim, grow, and harvest. And I do want to make the point that those are bona fide farming activities. Secondly, I'd like to bring up the one to two years of operation for the applicant for two acre operation here. What they're proposing is going to be seven acres. The new size is three and a half times the scope, which we're doing now. So just want to go on record saying that. Anyhow, proven operator issues aside, I'd like to bring up a few issues that I think are really key, that I'd like the commission to take a close look at tonight in opposition of this. The first would simply be a general plan issue. I think this application is in direct conflict with the general plan. Site-specific requests such as this one must not conflict with general plan policies. I believe this request is inconsistent with the controlling land use regulations. Lockford is currently designated as an urban community. And I'm going to go ahead and cite some of the existing San Joaquin County general plan goals. First is C1-1, a community identity. Recognizing that San Joaquin County's urban and rural communities are the primary environments for the county's unincorporated population, the county shall strive through its planning and provision of services to preserve and enhance their distinctiveness, identity, and livability. I believe, as well as a lot of the other neighbors that have spoken, that this is in direct conflict of C1.1. C1.2, character and quality of life. County shall encourage new development in urban and rural communities to be designed to strengthen the desirable characteristics and historical character of communities. The CBD factory, once again, will be in direct conflict of this. C1.4, complete and well-structured communities. The county shall promote the development of complete and well-structured urban and rural communities whose physical layout and land use mix promote healthy activity, foster community pride, enhance community identity, ensure public safety, are family-friendly, and address the needs of all ages and abilities. I read one of the, I read a few of the documents from law enforcement. I don't see, so the sheriff recommends having armed guards. This directly conflicts with C1.4 for obvious reasons. Second point I'd like to make. Current zoning is IG, general industrial. San Joaquin County allows a range of manufacturing, distribution, and storage. It does not allow farming. Request currently mentions no storefront retail. I think this implies, this is implication of retail, as retail comes in many different forms. Knowing there are many different types of retail, this project would simply be forbidden from engaging in any form of retail. So I ask the commission to keep this in mind if they would. Any element or aspect of the sales considered retail, whether online, direct mail, or storefront. Traffic, this is an area of overwhelming traffic currently. Both forms of truck and car, as well as agit, which the study does not bring to light. I'd like to make the point that the proposer's study was done during a pandemic and does not, does not even come close to accurately depict the traffic situation on these surrounding roadways. Adding 110 trips a day will, in essence, add more water to an already full bucket. There's a, there is a county traffic study that I'd like to quickly read. County traffic study states that Route 1288 is a primary element of Lockford's circulation system. In addition to carrying local traffic, road is the town's primary link to stop and locate, also major regional access to Sierra. Consequently, the two-lane highway experiences high-traffic volumes on weekends since it functions both as Lockford's main street and major surfrere. The highway within Lockford has become a bottleneck. I'm still citing the county. Opportunities to improve this stretch of highway are limited. Consequently, construction of a state Route 1288 bypass around the community may be necessary to maintain level of service standards. And it goes on to state.
Sir, we are at the five-minute mark.
Okay, one last quick point, and I'm almost done. I want to talk about water usage. They want 17 million perhaps annually, okay? An almond orchard, that'd be a 20-acre almond orchard. But we cannot compare it to an almond orchard because agriculture is forbidden in this zoning. This is not a farming operation. So we have to compare it to a more traditional use, such as, let's say, a winery or warehouse. The water usage is going to be many thousands times fold. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Please vote no on this.
Thank you very much. Moving on. We have Andy Leasy. I apologize by mispronouncing that name, who has requested to speak. Please unmute yourself and address the commission.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Andrea Leacy. I am an attorney with Remy Moose Manley, representing the applicant. When the time is appropriate, I'd like to address some of the environmental issues that have been raised, and I'm here for any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, to be clear, that was someone for the project or against?
That's correct.
Okay. He's an attorney that has represented the applicant for certain land use components, so she's prepared to speak on any environmental issues if you have questions.
Any more opposition online at the moment? We had some previous.
Yes, I'd like to speak. My name is Noah Stetson. I am a Lockford property owner who lives one mile from the proposed project. I previously submitted a letter of opposition. After listening to the project representatives at our recent Lockford MAC meeting, I am still in strong opposition. Regarding safety, I know there's a detailed plan required by the Sheriff's Office about the security, fencing, background checks, et cetera. But what happens when the delivery and business trucks leave the site onto narrow roads and travel around the North County? Law enforcement has a proactive plan, but realistically would have to respond to incidents with a limited number of officers and wait for backup. In addition, what is the plan for a power failure? Diesel generators creating a noise nuisance, loss of surveillance and security systems, one or two guard employees for a 17-acre greenhouse site and buildings? These are a few of the questions that are not adequately addressed. As informed at the MAC meeting, non-storefront retail does in fact provide retail to consumers via their cargo delivery trucks. With up to 10 trips per day on these deliveries all day long into the nearby unincorporated county along rural roads, with cash as well as high-grade cannabis rather than black-market products in their retail delivery trucks. Although environmental health requires strict guidelines, there will still be an oil-based mixture carried into the air. This offensive air travels with the delta breeze eastward towards the town as well as nearby residents. Although the traffic study allows the number of proposed vehicle trips, it would still be a major problem with congestion and safety. State Highway 8812 and surrounding county roads are already overcrowded with reckless and speeding drivers. The project planners have made no effort to engage or educate the Lockford community about their plans. It appears they prefer it to be built with little publicity. They do not appear to support our small rural community, but rather support their shareholders with profits on their 23-acre parcel of land and buildings. Although there is a required percentage gross received impact date, one other county expenses in time and costs to date and expected. Unincorporated Lockford will not directly benefit from this or any other cannabis business. In summary. or any other cannabis business. In summary, there is no benefit to the community of Lockford from this business project. I urge you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
We have a number of, it looks like, call-in participants. This would be your opportunity to unmute your phone through the STAR6 command and address the commission.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Brian Pilkington, and I live on Victor Road, less than a mile from this facility. And I'm vehemently opposed to this project for a variety of social reasons and moral reasons as well. Many people stood up and spoke regarding the criminal activities, and I just don't feel as though that it fits our, our community. I realize it's an industrial park, and they're buffered by other industrial facilities, but I don't believe that there's any benefit to our society and to our community. I feel as though it's more a detriment. There's various water issues which people spoke of, the groundwater and the pollution, the light pollution, the noise pollution, and my goodness, the traffic. I live on Victor Road. If you want to see traffic, just try to get there on Saturday or Sunday. This business is going to be open seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and I don't feel as though we have the traffic ability to deal with this. So I feel as though there needs to be more study done and more planning done with regard to the overall effect upon our community as well as our children, which is less than a mile from this proposed facility. So thank you for your time, and again, I'm very opposed to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to the next caller.
If you were participating through the call-in, this would be your opportunity to unmute yourself. That would be the STAR6 command on your phone and address the commission. Or if you are still participating via Teams and were interested in addressing the commission regarding this project, again, this is for item number two, the Commercial Cannabis Development Agreement, number PA 2000094, and Special Purpose Plan, number PA 2000007 of NRC Equity Fund I. Again, this is your opportunity to unmute and address the condition, sorry, the commission. I'm seeing no further participants through the online.
Okay. This time, the applicant may provide a rebuttal.
I've been waiting to get off.
I believe we just heard someone attempting to address the commission. Are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here. My name is Rick Cropper out on Brent Road, not far from this proposed facility.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm a general contractor and developer and also rancher in the area. Moved up from Southern California to this area since 1963. I don't only like Lockford, I love it. I love the community, I love the people, love the markets in the local area. It sounds corny nowadays because people move around quite a bit. But I'm going to tell one joke real quick, just to lighten everybody's hearts up down there. The joke is, when there's a recession, your neighbor's out of work. But when you're laid off, it's a depression. So in the, the equalness to that joke is, when somebody comes in and develops in your neighborhood, in your town that you love, a small, quaint little town like Lockford, California, there's a lot of history behind this town in Clements. It was a gateway going up into the Sierra Nevada and everything. And it's just not another town. It's a beautiful, beautiful place. And there's a lot of ranchers and a lot of farms and people that have tried to make a living for years and years with, down in the little beautiful valley north of this proposed property, you know? There's people that have invested and bought lots across the street for future nice residential development. So it's zoned for light farming and residential up and down the north side of Lock Road. And I'm quite familiar with the facility there. Also, I went to, at the end, asked you, have you guys respond to a question? He said tops out at 5%. I don't know if that was going to, and I don't want an answer now, but 5% tops out, does that include the 7.75 sales tax that's already going on in the, in the area? Okay? Because I sell stuff too, and I know there's a 7.75 sales tax. But moving on. So I understand those men want to make profit. They want to make a, a good amount of profit in their project. But they make it sound so clinical and so clean and easy. But the end use is, the product, I mean, you guys discussed all the technical things in the beginning of this meeting, but the real bottom line is, this is a drug. What they are going to be producing and putting out the building, I went with an open mind at the Lockford Community Meeting and thought it was just going to be for medical use or CBD oil. But then I found out that they're going to have a retail, not where you drive up, but they will drive it to your door. Doesn't matter if it's next door, down the street, or to Stockton. They'll drive this drug, which is THC, if anybody's forgot that. They're going to drive this drug wherever it's needed. We spent billions and trillions of dollars trying to stamp out drug distribution in this state with marijuana. People get thrown in jail for little baggies of it, and now we're all behind it. You know, what's changed? They dangle the carrot. It's about money. You guys sound kind of positive that you want to pass this, to be honest with you. I'm not prejudging you, but it sounds like you want to get this thing passed and get another four or 5% in the coffers because this is what you need. But if you look underneath all the freeways, every time this state comes up with more gambling, more of this, more of that's going to help the schools and everything, we got more people living under the bridges than I've seen in my whole life since 63. Something's going wrong, and the, I'll, I'll get right to it. What does a man gain if he gains the whole world but loses his soul? You know, and I'm not a Bible thumper, but I'm just saying, in other words, you gain money but destroy lives. Nowadays, we can equate it. It's okay. We're just going to do this drug business, and we're going to gain money and fill the coffers in the county, but we destroy lives. That's the bottom line. That's what's truth. And there's one other little tidbit here. It says whatsoever a man sows, so shall he reap. If we sow that in the other people's destruction, destruction comes back to us. It comes back to our county, comes back to our town, comes back to our state, comes back to our nation. It's a, it's a biblical truth, and no man, no county supervisor, no one can deny that. Last but not least, THC stays in the fat cells of the body, because I know different CHP officers are taught that in their training for, to be officers. They understand that. It's a medical fact that some of that stays in their bodies, and it also leads people to stronger drugs. So my next question is, do we start then distributing cocaine next? Because this is a gateway drug that everybody's getting septicized throughout the United States and Colorado. And I got friends that live in Colorado, and this is, this little experience not going good in Colorado. So you pull up a stop sign and wave to people like you used to, and there's nobody home. They don't wave back, some of them.
Sir, we're at the five minutes.
Last but not least, fire suppression is the most incredible, important thing of life safety of big buildings. You're talking over 400,000 square foot. Nobody was clear at the Lockford Community Meeting if they had to drill wells and put towers up to handle the water that's going to be needed to put those fires out. We don't even have enough fire trucks in Lockford and Clements to take care of 400,000 square foot if this thing went up in an inferno. That's all my comments. I pray that God bless all you guys and make the right decision, and I appreciate you giving me time to listen to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else calling in?
If there's anyone else who has joined through the Microsoft Teams, either via the program client or phone, this would be your opportunity to unmute yourself and address the commission. I'm seeing no further activity.
Okay. Then this time, we will hear the rebuttal from the applicant.
Vice Chair Gransky, members of the commission, again, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. Just a few points of clarification as to some of the comments that we just heard. One, NRC F1 is incorporated in Wyoming. We have our office, our principal place of business in Reno, but we are registered in California as a foreign entity and operating, paying taxes legally according to California law. NRC Sellers, that was mentioned, that went bankrupt in 2020, was a completely separate business entity, a completely separate business venture, having nothing to do with this one. Most importantly, as to comments related to an increase in crime, an increase in crime does not correlate with the establishment of legal, regulated, commercial cannabis businesses and communities. On the contrary, you know, although these issues with crime are often conflated between legal and illegal cannabis businesses, when you establish legal cannabis businesses that are taxed and regulated, you actually create resources that can be utilized to address some of the existing issues in the community. That's what we've seen occurred in Stanislaus County. They enacted their commercial cannabis policy to combat illegal cannabis in that county. Since that time, they've added new positions to the Sheriff's Department, new, new positions to the District Attorney's Office. And once this business is up and running, generating revenue, we'd be happy to stand arm in arm with the community members advocating for additional resources to be allocated to this community to help improve circumstances where there are issues currently affecting the community negatively. As far as a mention of a shift in public policy, a gentleman mentioned, why have we criminalized drugs and now we are welcoming into the community? Well, I would say that, 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 that shift reflects a policy that was ineffective, and it negatively impacted many, many lives. The state of California has now declared this cannabis is legal now, and we are seeing a movement on the federal side with a shift towards decriminalization. And ultimately, I believe there will be full federal legalization here in the United States. As to health issues related to cannabis, cannabis is utilized by many, many millions of consumers in the state of California for both medicinal and recreational uses. I'd mentioned that, you know, communities across the United States have seen a huge, huge public health crisis with the opioid epidemic, and cannabis is often looked at as a compassionate alternative, certainly to those harsher legal substances as well as harsher street drugs. And, you know, it's a matter of preference as to a person's reasons for utilizing cannabis. You're not here to make a, a moral determination or, or a social determination on this. It's whether or not this project meets the criteria that the county has set forth. This project and all commercial cannabis businesses are subject to strict regulation associated with the non-diversion of cannabis to ineligible customers. And so, you know, in light of that rigorous regulation, the cost of establishing and maintaining licensed operations, there is zero chance that you're going to see a licensed commercial cannabis business divert its products to ineligible consumers, especially namely children. That, that simply does not occur. I wanted to correct that assertion. This site was originally intended to help facilitate the wine industry in, in our area. And even over the last 50 years with the development of the wine industry here, no one from a traditional ag business has stepped up to try and utilize this space. Right? I mentioned that in my original comments. I, I'm going to cede the remainder of my time to Ms. Lazy, but I think the environmental concerns have been addressed in a robust environmental review, and the mitigated negative declaration addresses each and every environmental issue that was raised. There was a mention that the greenhouses would be glowing at night. We tried to make clear in the municipal advisory council meeting that we'd have blackout curtains that actually draw over the top of the supplemental lining within the greenhouses so that in the event that those lights are illuminated during nighttime hours, the blackout curtains are going to shield that light from escaping from the greenhouses and polluting the outer atmosphere. I wanted to correct that assertion as well. There was mention of current traffic issues facing this community. I would say that the traffic at this location is going to be extremely minimal. We estimated a maximum of 10 deliveries per day. I think that is possibly an overestimate. In phase one, we'd have a maximum of 25 employees. And so when you look at, you know, operations like Kellogg or Jensen that have semi-trucks, you know, lined up at 6:00 AM, commerce and logistics in the commercial cannabis industry is not facilitated by trucking. It's, it's usually cargo vans and small delivery vehicles that facilitate movement of this product. So those traffic issues are not going to be coming from this facility as well. I would also say that this project is consistent with the general plan. I'm sure staff can help elaborate on that a little better. Local impact fees would be in addition to any relevant sales tax. And then finally, as to fire suppression, we're currently working on getting an engineered fire suppression infrastructure in place, and we certainly will have sufficient reserves of water and hookups for the fire department in the event that there is some sort of emergency on site. With that, I'd like to cede the rest of my time to Ms. Lazy, if she wants to address any of the sequoia-specific issues that have been raised. And outside of her comments, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Andrea Leasy with Remy Moose Manley. Just want to touch briefly on the traffic issue that I heard raised this evening. Katie Anderson did a full traffic analysis. At pages two and 16 of that study, he explained how they also included Caltrans data from pre-COVID times along State Route 12 and 88 to support the less-than-significant impact conclusion. And in addition to staff mentioning the less-than-50 trips per hour threshold. And I believe Mr. Dravon answered all the other questions or issues quite efficiently. So unless the commission has any sequoia or land use questions for me, I will cede the floor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
Could, there were some general plan issues mentioned. What I read in the report, who addressed those? Maybe not in the same verbiage as what we heard on the phone, but is there anything else that you would like to add or in rebuttal to what was said?
Just that under the planning and zoning law, you as the elected decision-making body and making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors have deference in how you interpret your general plan policies. I didn't hear any general plan goals that were raised that are mandatory and specific directives.
I'm not mistaken. I believe that was directed towards staff. Is that correct?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, thanks for jumping in.
No, thank you.
Would staff like to make comment?
Would you like to speak? So to answer your question, Commissioner Rustaller, when the Board of Supervisors adopted the cannabis ordinance, at that point, it was determined that it was consistent with our general plan and the policies of the county. So I would state that we have found that this existing, that this proposed project is consistent with our general plan. Some of the things that the gentleman was, was speaking about with the historic nature of Lockford really does apply more to the downtown or the main street in Lockford where there are some historic buildings. This area is also, it is considered in the urban community of Lockford, but it is planned, it has been planned for a very long time for a general industrial type of operation. So they're not changing what the area was originally planned for. It's been designated with that general plan designation for many, many years.
Thanks for that clarification. I have some questions for Mr. Dravon or turning on the line. I'm not sure who would answer these. The first one, there was a question that was brought up about water supply and how, you know, in the, everyone's using the same Aquifer and everything, and it sort of led to the, the understanding that by opening up a project, more water would be diverted from what would normally be allocated to agricultural use.
So that's, that's one of the issues that was addressed in the mitigated negative deck. We are anticipating a maximum use of 17 million gallons. The available water in our immediate area provides up to 31 million gallons per year. So we're just over half of that. I would also cite that we use drip irrigation in the, in the greenhouses, and we also recapture our condensate. So up to So up to 90% of the water that feeds into the plants is recaptured and recycled. So we are well within our acceptable water use threshold at that site, and we're implementing practices for cultivation, which is the heaviest use as far as water use, to make sure that, you know, we're being efficient with the water that we're using on site.
Thank you. There was also a question or comment made about wastewater disposal.
Thank you for raising that.
Could you, could you comment on that, please?
There will be no wastewater pond in the open area of this project site. What she is referring to, I believe, she's misconstruing the stormwater retention pond that's going to capture stormwater on the site. There's not going to be any, you know, waste pit that is going to be on site.
Which, and if it's stormwater, it is monitored and reported per policies, both the state and, correct?
Well, it's going to be, there's going to be an engineered stormwater control plan that built, that work is worked into the design of that stormwater retention pond, and that will facilitate all the stormwater that would be running off that site into the open land.
Two other questions while they're, we'll see. Maybe it's one long one. When deliveries are made, so sort of run us through some, the call-in, make their purchase, is the, when the delivery person goes out, are they delivering just to an address, or are they actually delivering to a person who would have to sign for the product?
So they, so first of all, there's statewide delivery, right? So any licensed delivery company can deliver to any private residence or private business in the entire state of California. So if I've got the gas and the bandwidth and I have a delivery license out of, let's say, Oakland, I can deliver to Lockford right here and now. You know, more specifically, there are existing delivery services out of Sacramento that are delivering into this community, out of Modesto that are delivering to this community. But to answer your question, when a driver arrives at a delivery location, they have to validate that person's identity, their identification, the purchaser's identification would be provided to that delivery service along with their name, and they would have to check their ID before they provide that product to that person at that location. So again, it's only adults 21 and up, recreational cannabis.
So I think that sort of answered my second question. How do you know if you're delivering to a legitimate location or person?
That's how you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And on the delivery, you're talking about 10 trips a day?
Yeah, so you're going to want to queue up your deliveries. So your business opens at 8:00 AM. You're not going to want to send your delivery driver out with two orders. So you'd probably allow your delivery orders to queue up between 8:30, 9, 9:30 AM so that they were aggregated and they could make the most efficient use of their time where they're out in the field delivering. That may take them two to three hours, depending on the number of orders, maybe even longer. They arrive back at the facility, just an example, 11:00 AM. They allow those delivery orders to queue up again. Maybe they're leaving the facility an hour or so later, and that's why you have a limited number of deliveries from that site out into the public.
Gotcha. So it's like an LTL delivery, truck delivery. Seems like that's what the community is most concerned about. I mean, it seems like a small part of the business for the overall scope of the buildup of the project. Is that correct?
I would agree with that statement.
I mean, that's.
I feel like most of the concerns are misunderstanding of the nature of commercial cannabis businesses themselves. And that misunderstanding in and of itself is somewhat understandable because this is a newly regulated industry in this community. But what we've seen in other communities adjacent to us is that commercial cannabis businesses do not result in an increase in crime, that they're run safely, discreetly, and without any disturbance to the community. I would cite one that's actually located in the city of Stockton, 633 San Juan Avenue. It was the first facility that was entitled, maybe the first one anywhere in the region. That's located in a light industrial area. There are non-conforming residences directly across the street. That facility was entitled in 2017. The owners invested $10 million. That facility in the last four months has become operational. And if you go ask representatives from the Stockton Police Department or even community members, there has been no increase in, you know, crime, negative activity, or any sort of disturbance to the community. That facility also has cultivation, distribution, as well as non-storefront delivery as part of their operations. So it's almost a perfect example of a light industrial operation that's adjacent to other potentially sensitive uses that is not creating a disturbance, and that is a real anecdote for the commission to consider. It's an actual business within the county's borders that's operating in the municipality of Stockton.
Well, with these deliveries, they don't collect on the spot, right? It's taken care of before they go out to make the delivery, or are they collecting cash?
Say again?
When, when they go out for the delivery, the transaction has already taken place, right? So they're not, they're not, they're not exchanging money.
There will be an exchange of currency in certain circumstances, yes. So the dispatcher will typically ask, you know, what denominations of cash that you're providing so that they can, you know, estimate the appropriate amount of change to provide. But those, you know, those issues are planned for in the delivery operation itself.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of just my question. With the delivery being what seems to be overall such a small part of the actual business, I mean, is the juice kind of worth the squeeze there for community-wise? It seems like that's the only thing that really, besides the issues that are already taken care of through staff reports and your guys' stuff as well. I mean, I guess I'm just talking. I'm just wondering how, how worth it the delivery side of it is. But again, just 10 trips mostly a day. You're looking for full loads to go out, deliver. So the reality of traffic from a delivery is probably as much as a pizza delivery guy or something to that effect.
I'd say that's a, that's a pretty close comparison, yes.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
So hypothetically speaking, if this thing does get approved, what is the timeframe you're looking at to open it?
The first phase of the development will take place over the next two years. So we expect to be up and running with our processing, distribution, manufacturing, delivery, and four of the, I believe there are approximately 12,000 plus square feet greenhouses. So an aggregate of 110,000 square foot of greenhouse within the next two years will be operational. And from that, we'll go into our second phase of the development to construct the remainder of the greenhouses on site.
So total, there is two phases starting in 2023, mid-2023?
We would expect to be operational on the processing, distribution, and potentially delivery if we're very, very lucky by the end of this year or the first part of 2022. The full development will take place over five years.
Okay. So my question again, if I may, if this thing does get approved, your date, approximate date of operations to open to the public is next year?
Next year, yeah. That's, that's a fair estimate. And it's not, I would respectfully correct you, it's not open to the public. We are providing that direct-to-consumer delivery.
Right. Open for business.
Yes.
I meant, okay, sorry. Correction, technicality there. Do you, do you guys like owner, operators, or do you guys have any plans of meeting with the public again since some people are having a concern because all this happened during the COVID? Is there an opportunity for them in the near future to come meet with you, have a public meeting, have a town hall or something like that?
I'd be happy to facilitate engagement with the community, absolutely. And, and we would hope to dispel some of their concerns and some of the negative stigma associated with cannabis that I think is informing some of these beliefs and comments that you've heard tonight. And I think the proof will be in, you know, the pudding of, of the operation in its actual existence. Once we're up and running, we'll have the opportunity to prove ourselves that we will not be a disturbance and that we will serve as an asset to the community.
Besides the community calling the community planning department or the commissioners, how can they reach you? Is there a pretty obvious way of reaching out to you guys?
I can provide my office number for the record. It's 209-636-4856. I work for my own law office, Dravon Consulting. And also reach me, zach, Z-A-C-H, at dravonconsulting.com. That's D as in David, R-I-V-O-N, consulting.com. I'm always happy to engage with members of the public, answer questions about these projects, and, and provide clarity as to exactly what would take place in the event of its approval.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to bring it for the record because not everybody reads the whole agenda. So we do have your information, how to contact you, but for the general public out there, we wanted to make it clear and obvious that, you know, you are available for any questions and for public meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did go out to the site, and I thought it was very suitable. I liked the idea of the, of the winery being put to use, and I thought that the area, it was far enough from downtown. Thought it would be a good spot for that.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more questions for the applicant, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Midgley. I think it's a good site. You know, I understand the community out in Lockford as well. I, I've seen these operations be successful. Whether or not it's morally appropriate for a community really isn't my decision or the commission's decision in general. I, yeah, I think it's a, you know, I think it's a good project overall. I really do. I think they've done a good job of answering all the questions that have come up, even... The only thing I will say that this is not the applicant's problem, I mean, it's not the applicant's, this is just open is, I sure would like to see some of those tax dollars be able to stick in the actual community where they're doing, not just going to the county in general, but that's a different discussion, but just thought I'd mention that in general. Because a place like Lockford could use an injection of funds in some way. And, you know, the other item we had, again, the area of report, similar situation. So anyway, that's my comments. Anyone else?
I'll just copy you on that, that it's morally could be wrong for a lot of people, but we are not here to decide on the moral factor or the social factor. We are deciding what the law says. And it's been passed in the state of California. There's many other things that are very, at a higher level of danger and morally wrong, but they are legal. I mean, I don't smoke, so I don't know what's the benefit or not the benefit, but if it's especially for medicinal and even for recreational, you know, there's pros and cons to everything. Again, taking it from a perspective of a business and taking it from the perspective of land use and where it is, the zoning and all that, I think this is a good place for it rather than having it close to the downtown or into the mainstream market or something. Again, it's, it's very important that we keep in mind that wherever you go, I'm not saying anyone in particular, but wherever a business goes, they should feel welcome. And, you know, the community, the public safety, those kind of things should always prioritize more than money. But we live in a materialistic world, and this is not something illegal. Keeping that in mind, especially with the location and the land use, that is our job to go with the land use, not to dictate morality here. At the same time, we hope that you guys will make sure that, you know, public safety is the number one concern, it's been taken care of, and, you know, not taken lightly just to say something and not follow through that. Again, no offense to no one, our job is to maintain that balance here, looking to, listening to the applicant and also listening to the, all the concerned citizens. There's pros and cons to everything. I think the burden falls on the owner, operator to make sure that, you know, if you're going to expand yourself or if you're going to bring yourself to the community next time for some expansion, the proof is in the pudding. So going with that, I think I'm okay with, a little hesitant, but okay with the land use and the, you know, the general plan allocation the way it is. Our, our job at the planning commission is not to go with the bar of morality, but the bar of what's legal and what's not, what's allowed. I'm okay with it for now.
Great. Commissioner Rustaller, anything?
I'm not going to, I'll speak briefly. Two other commissioners have pretty summed up my opinion of what our duty is and how we're supposed to execute the function that we've been asked to do as commissioners. With that, I will say that this has been about a year since I've been appointed to the commission, and I, you know, they talk about grassroots, whatever it is, whatever the issue is. Tonight, we actually saw, we had five people in attendance speak against the project and six people on the phone that I counted. That's my number, I may be off, but that's, to me, that shows there is a concern, and it is up to, to the owners to ease those concerns. And I think that will be done as they see the project unfolding over the next two to five years. And so I'm in support of this project.
Okay. Do we have a motion at this time?
I'll make an motion that we adopt and mitigate negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan, attachment C, environmental review, and forward the commercial cannabis development agreement, number PA 2000094, and special purpose plan, number PA 200007, to the board of supervisors with the development agreement, attachment D, basis for recommendation, attachment E, and conditions of approval contained in the staff report, attachment F.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
If we could just clarify in that motion whether you do or don't include the additional attachment, which we've asked you to include, so if you could just clarify in your motion whether you intend to include the attachment provided to the commission?
Yes, that.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. We'll go to a vote.
I think we're seeing the oral roll call. Commissioner Sanga?
Yes.
Commissioner Rustaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Midgley?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunsky?
Yes.
With Commissioner Hamilton absent, that concludes our roll call vote.
You know, on to other business. One second. The appeal period for that item is April 26, 2021, and the appeal fee is $648.
Chair. Actually, if I may clarify, that this item will move forward to the board regardless because of development agreement and the special purpose plan. And I, we're still in the middle of scheduling at this point. Thank you.
Okay. I hope Commissioner Hamilton is recuperating nicely.
Me as well. I can't wait to have him back. You guys don't have to watch me fumble through that whole mess again. I mean, curveball after curveball from the staff. But that's it. And then do we have the director's report?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. I just wanted to point out for your May 6 meeting, you do have two items, and one is a variance for a subdivision of 20 acre, excuse me, a subdivision for a number of smaller parcels. And then you also have a zoning or zone reclassification project before you as well that is basically regarding allowing the use of animals. And actually, it's the, it's the old county, I won't say old county area, but it's an old county application that we initiated in conjunction and in consultation with the community out there. But we'll provide more information as the staff reports provide it to you. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay. That's it. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, commissioners. Well handled, considering all curveballs. I very much appreciate you.